Commission welcomes you to attend the meetings electronically or in person at the City Council chambers located at 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley. Regular meetings are scheduled at 6:00 PM on the third Tuesday of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 by Nevada County Media, on the Internet at CityOfGrassValley.com, or on the City of Grass Valley's YouTube channel. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390, and email to public@CityOfGrassValley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting. If received by 5:00 PM, comments received after that will be addressed during the item and/or at the end of the meeting. Agenda materials, staff reports, and background information related to the regular agenda items are available on the city's website. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the commission after distribution of the agenda packet will be made available on the website at CityOfGrassValley.com, subject to city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. Uh, pledge of allegiance, um, Liz, would you care to lead us?
Yes. All want to join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Liz. Taylor, would you mind taking the roll call, please?
Present.
Commissioner Bruletti is absent. Commissioner Coots?
Present.
Commissioner Gross?
Present.
Chairman Robbins?
Present.
Four members are present.
Agenda approval, are there any modifications needed?
None from staff.
Can I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Coots and Bruletti. All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved. Action minutes, approval of the minutes for Planning Commission, our meeting in January 16th. Are there any comments or questions about the minutes from last month's meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? I will move to approve the minutes from the January meeting.
A second.
Moved by Robbins, second by Coots. All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. That takes us to open public comment. Uh, this is now the time for members of the public to address items that are not on the agenda. If there are members of the public who would like to comment on items not on the agenda, please stand up now. Seeing none in the room, do we have any virtual general public comment?
There are no additional public comments.
Okay. Three, two, one, public comment closed, which takes us to public hearing item number one.
Uh, so this is, yes, thank you Chair. This is for a time extension request for the Bearman Ranch Phase Two duet project. Really, this is just, the development code gives the Planning Commission the ability to grant two, uh, two, three-year extensions, um, you know, as long as there's not any new circumstances that would, you know, warrant a different decision. Circumstances with the project or circumstances surrounding the project, um, there are none to my knowledge. Their reason for the delay in the project is that they are, they are lacking a sewer lift station, and they're trying to fund and construct that project. And they, they're expecting it to be built sometime in 2025, so that's more or less the reason for extension requests and why they haven't been able to pull permits yet.
Okay.
And I will, I'll also note, so your purview is the tentative map itself. The plan development and the design review portion are a staff level approval, and they are, they can only be approved for one-year increments. So they're gonna have a different timeline now, which I'm not sure is really what was meant to happen. Um, so at some point, I'll probably come back to you with a development code change where all those entitlements go together with the tentative map. So you'd be approving all the entitlements together. But that's not what the development code says right now, so staff level would be the develop, design review and the develop, the, the plan development portion of it. Your purview right now is just the map itself.
Okay. Is that the presentation?
That is it.
Okay.
The, I've got the, the, the map that was approved back in, when was that? Three years ago?
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Uh, I know Liz and I were here for that. I think Justin and Ari, you, yeah, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm familiar with this spot. I remember, I actually took a tour of it, uh, actually last year, so, um, somewhat familiar with where this is and...
Were there any concerns on the map, the initial review?
Hmm, not, uh, well, depends on who you ask. One of the neighboring HOAs was not a fan of duplexes, but, um, that didn't stop the project.
That's the, uh, the condo HOA? Is it the, the one that's right there? Or was it the actual subdivision?
No, it was carriage house. It was the one, the existing one.
The houses.
Yeah. Is the, is the, I assume the applicant is not?
No, um, that, you know, typically I'd put this on something like a consent agenda. They, I know Martin Wood is, uh, representing the project. He couldn't, he's at another Planning Commission meeting, and, um, the app, I told the applicant it was probably, he would have to fly out here for it, so I told him it was probably not real necessary, but, um, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this map time extension request for Bearman Ranch Phase Two? Seeing none in the room, do we have any virtual public comment on this item?
There are no additional comments.
Okay. Any last questions? Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel guideline section 15162, adopt the findings of fact for the approval of the extension of time for the tentative map as presented, and to approve the extension of time for the Bearman Ranch Phase Two duet project tentative subdivision map in accordance with the conditions of approval on the mitigation monitoring table adopted for the project as presented in the staff report?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Coots and Gross. Uh, could you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Bruletti?
Aye.
Commissioner Coots?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Chairman Robbins?
Aye.
Four yeses.
Item passes, which takes us to public hearing item number two, development review permit for Sherwin-Williams.
Thank you Chair. Um, let me just get this on the elevation sheets. My Adobe gave me that exact same error message. Yeah, no, I, I think I get it every time I open it, so it must be a note that, that applicant put it on there, but it doesn't like for some reason. Um, okay, so yes, this is a development review permit for the construction of a approximately 4,300 square foot retail paint store for Sherwin-Williams on, um, what will be one and a half acre property after a lot line adjustment is completed, along Nevada City Highway. Um, this project complies with all the city's setback requirements. Uh, the primary access will be a 25-foot wide shared access easement located on the Lumberjacks Restaurant site, um, a secondary access, which is right adjacent to the site. Um, a secondary access will come off of Gates Place with a 24-foot driveway. Uh, there's gonna be a total of 18 onsite parking spaces, including one ADA space, uh, and that complies with our, our parking standards. Landscaping is provided around the perimeter of the proposed building as well as the parking lot perimeter, consistent with the requirements of the development code. The building design has similar architecture to other buildings in the Brunswick Basin, including drive-it siding, which I believe is what they used on Quick Quack, um, but it's essentially a cement plaster or synthetic stucco. Uh, fiber cement horizontal channel siding, um, stack stone veneer, and the roofing material will be a flat parapet, parapet with, uh, gable peaks, um, on the parapets. And then windows and doors to be covered with standing seam metal shed roofs, um, and the front entrance to be covered with a flat awning style. Building lighting will primarily feature goose neck lighting. Um, I'll go into lighting in just a little bit more detail in a minute. Um, there's gonna be a six-foot high CMU trash enclosure with steel gates that will be located in the back of the building, sort of on the Gates Place side. The proposed lighting includes 20-foot parking, parking lot pole lighting and goose nut wall fixtures. A finding was made by DRC to approve the light pool, light height because it met the other lighting standards, um, like light spillage and fixture orientation. So there's a finding, uh, number eight, that allows you to go higher than the standard 14-foot height limit. Uh, as far as grading and drainage, the site slopes north to south at approximately 5% slope. Earthwork will involve the export of 3,862 cubic yards of material so that it aligns, so that it aligns with the existing grade of the driveway that, that they'll be using on the Lumberjack side. Uh, onsite drainage is collected in downspouts and gutters and directed into the treatment areas, which also includes a bio retention pond, which is also on the, the Gates Place side. According to the site plan, a total of three cottonwood trees on the north side of the property and eight pine trees along Gates Place will be removed to accommodate the project, um, and a true removable permit will be required. So the project i, has a land use designation of commercial along the Nevada City Highway side and business park along the Gates Place, uh, side for the general plan. A portion of the property that's developed with the actual retail building will be, uh, is Zoned C2, and then the ancillary improvements, uh, will, like the parking trash storage and the, um, the, the secondary access off Gates will be on the zoning of commercial business park. Uh, DRC recommended approval of the project as conditioned with suggestion that more vibrant paint colors or accents may be appropriate, though they didn't, they didn't, um, require it. Uh, and they also added a condition to provide, that the applicant provided landscaping for the area that is included with the lot line adjustment, because originally it was not, uh, clear what that landscaping was gonna be, and they did provide that, and that's, um, what's included in your packet today. And with that, I can answer any questions?
Did you say the driveway was gonna be off Gates Place? That's the main access?
That's the secondary access.
Secondary, okay, okay.
I, I, you know, the applicant might, um, speak more to it, but I think that's more for like contractor trucks to come up and they're, you know, there's a bay door on the backside so that they can access.
Yeah, 'cause you said it would be shared at the...
So if you look at the, yeah, if you look at the screen, there's a, there's a, you know, an entrance, entry point into Lumberjacks here, and the, there'd be a, so they'd expand that a little bit, and then it'd be a shared, there's a shared easement there right now, and so this would be, um, shared access right into here.
Any other questions?
I have a question on the, the sidewalk, on the Gates Place.
Yeah.
Are we ending that sidewalk right after the driveway? It's not going all the, to the, the full extension?
So I'll let Kathy talk about that, but that, I believe that was, um, what you said they could do.
Uh, yeah, we figured that if there's any, we're gonna condition it so that if there's any future development and another permit comes in for the back part of that property that they're not developing, or the adjacent parcel, um, then we will require that the sidewalk be extended. But until, there's no plans right now, so it would just go nowhere, and so until there's development planned for that area, that's when we would require it.
Okay. But it's, it goes along the, um, Nevada City Highway all the way? Yeah, okay.
Ari?
Yeah.
Uh, is, is our applicant, do you have something you would like to add to the presentation or?
I don't, I can answer any questions. Amy did.
Okay. Um, I do have two questions. I don't know if Amy or you, uh, on this, the, I don't know how rough draft this parking is, but it puts the, the handicapped van and handicap spot not in front of the store? Uh, they're off, like, to the front so that folks would have to, like, walk around the landscaping to get to the front door? And I imagine that this parking plan is not necessarily totally final, but...
Yeah, I mean, the, so the building department, I don't think has, they, they've seen it preliminarily, but they haven't done a, a complete review. I don't know if there's a, an actual problem. They have to have certainly a path of travel to their entrance, um, but, I don't know, is there, do you have any idea if there's a, a problem with switching where the accessible parking is?
Do you wanna stand up?
Well, yeah, it's, it would be best, come on, speak into the mic.
My name is Matt McWhorter. I don't, the engineer drew it that way.
Okay.
There's no, I don't think there's a specific ordinance about where it has to be located as long as it's within a certain distance and meets the certain slope. I mean, it can't be greater than, I think it's 2%. We're open to moving it. I mean, it's...
Okay, I just, philosophically, to me, the idea of handicap parking is to get them as close to the door as possible, but, um, I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking it.
No, I agree.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's... One, two, three. We can certainly talk to the engineer about it. I don't know if that'll, if we lose a space by doing that.
Um, just looking at the grades on the other, one of the other drawings, they have a profile, it looks like the parking spots that are further up are not 2%, they're more than 2%, which is why they would've put it back where they put it.
The, so the ones right in front of the door are too steep?
It looks like they're too steep.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay, well, um, if there's a slope issue, then it is what it is. If there was not a slope issue, I would say that they should be in front of the door.
Okay.
Um, what was my other question? The lighting? Uh, so our codes call for 14 feet, but you're asking for 20 feet tall? What's the situation there?
So the code says, and, and we've done this sort of more routinely with other, um, projects, more, at least since I've been here, but, um, the code says 14 feet is the, the height limit, um, but if you otherwise meet all the, the, the lighting standards, the Planning Commission, uh, can, can entertain, uh, a higher light post. Typically, you're looking at more lights, the, if you go shorter, to get the same level of lighting on a site, so more, most commercial operations are going kind of to that higher, that 20-foot height limit.
Okay.
I'll have a couple of questions for Matt now. Hi, Matt.
Hello, Ari.
Thank, thank you for the landscaping, but I, um, I did send you, or I had Amy send you, I'd really like to talk about the landscaping that you're putting in the, the area that's, we'll call it off of Gates Place, the lost land. Um, I'm not familiar with the blue oak, but I'm real familiar with the black oak. They tend, they, the black oak grows to the sun. They're bent. They're not that attractive of a tree here. I mean, it's a, it's an attractive tree except for the bending, but what happens to them is they rot from the inside and you can't tell, and then one day they just fall. Um, I don't know if the, if the blue oak has those same tendencies, but what I would really like to see is you use some, um, evergreen trees in that area to add some interest. Otherwise, everything you've got planted here is deciduous, and so in the wintertime, it's really gonna be blah. So I had Amy send you a copy of a Western red cedar, and this is, this is something that we use, have used a lot in Escaton. It's a really pretty tree, um, it's native, and they look, in the books, they talk about, oh my gosh, if you limb them up, they look awful. Well, I don't think they look awful at all. I think they look quite nice. Otherwise, they're, you know, down to the ground. So I would highly recommend, and of course, I can't make you do this, but I think in the long run, the owner of the property would be pleased to have trees that don't require so much care. Um, and then, I'll come back to that, but, and the ponderosa pine too, is a really nice tree to plant. Um, I looked back through our, um, Arboris reports that he has done over the years, and for the amount of work that he used, he had to do for the, the black oaks, their crowns constantly needed cabling and cleaning and, and just a lot of care. And so I would highly recommend going instead with, um, these evergreens.
So instead of the black oaks, which there's called for five of them?
Yeah.
Either ponderosa pine or some kind of seed.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna pick on the blue oaks because I do not have personal knowledge about them, but these other trees would be lovely there.
Hopefully, there's, it's not a permanent landscape on this .6 acres, meaning there's hopefully another use.
What I saw online was cheaper trees with the evergreens, but I don't really know that for sure.
I don't, just swapping out the black oaks for ponderosa pine or cedar, that's fine. No problem.
That would be great.
Okay.
And did, by any chance, did you bring samples of or a larger rendition of the building?
Did not.
Hmm.
I will say, driving around, they're pretty similar colors to what's there, what's out there now.
And some of that is over 20 years old. I mean, it's, you know, it's really old and boring. My comment, just a comment, was it's a paint store, and you look at the rendition of the building, and it looks pretty blah to me. Um, I would have recommended having some more interest in the colors. Just a comment.
I also wouldn't mind a splash of color, um, but I won't harp on that. Uh, was, was that...
The more recent building is Taco Bell. Of course, it's got a different facade, different elevations to it, but if you drive by, it's pretty similar to this.
Well, and did you look at Wendy's? I mean, did you mean...
The Wendy's is, yeah, Wendy's has got red, which is kind of a Wendy's standard color.
Yeah. The, and the standard colors that you brought in for design review for Sherwin-Williams were more of a, a, a blue, a...
We had blue awnings the first time around. Then this, we've changed that twice now. We're in the third round of elevations. The background colors of the building have pretty much stayed the same.
And what color are the awnings?
The awnings are metal.
They're just metal?
Metal.
Dark metal?
Like, no, it'd be like a silver corrugated metal, which is similar to the Wendy's, it's the same thing as the Wendy's roof. It's the same thing as the Taco Bell roof. Um, I think there's some other, Jimboys Taco's got the same silver awnings, so it's... Yeah, I mean, it's, the, the awnings itself are standing seam silver.
Can we have a picture of the facade?
Do I need to go to mine? Oh, are you looking at the facade of the...
What Matt had shown us in design review, um, the colors weren't what we're really seeing on this. I mean, I think this is even, has less color than what Matt brought in before. There was a little bit of green in the building, I mean, the green was, I, I still didn't get the green with, with the Sherwin-Williams logo. It didn't make any sense to me whatsoever.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We didn't have any, I didn't present anything with green. I think somebody within the committee pulled up a picture of a building somewhere else in the country.
Oh.
That wasn't...
You didn't bring that?
No.
Oh, sorry, okay.
This is, this is the same thing that we, was presented last year.
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought at that meeting, you, you were the person who brought a...
No, I think somebody pulled it up on the screen from Google.
That's right.
And then it popped up on the screen.
Oh, Miranda pulled that up at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Justin or Ari?
No.
No?
None.
Okay, um, then let's go, we haven't done public comment for this yet, have we? Okay, um, public comment, uh, is there anyone in the room who would like to give comment on this application? Seeing none, do we have any virtual public comment on this item?
There are no additional public comments.
Okay. Then, uh, do, we can either entertain a motion or do, do you wanna, you, you sound passionate about this color issue. Do you wanna...
No, I don't, I don't think we can make someone paint a building a particular way. So I, I think all I can do is just comment that it just seems underwhelming.
Okay. Then, uh, do I hear a motion to...
Chair, we do have one public comment if you'd like to hear that.
Ah, okay, let's, let's go to that public comment.
Almost there.
Yes, on the Sherwin-Williams store, uh, public comment, Matthew Coulter, and public comment being that this isn't through the development review on this, uh, the sidewalks need to be continuous on their property because when we allow no sidewalks along frontage, it never gets filled in. We have so many gaps in town of missing sidewalks. Uh, along with the sidewalk, a new bus stop would be nice to have out front, since the one in front of the Quick Quack is very dangerous, and if we can move it up the hill a little bit and have a cutout for the bus to actually get off the road, that would be fantastic. So these are things that need to be considered when we're doing these improvements, we're putting in this infrastructure, and we're overlooking public transportation, we're overlooking congestion, we're overlooking, uh, pedestrian traffic, all things we're trying to improve upon and expand upon. Thank you.
And that is the end of public comments.
Um, to that though, on the, wasn't the sidewalk extended, or, or did I see that wrong? Was that, was the sidewalk extended just, 'cause it's only a small portion, but was that? That's what I...
Yes, it's, it's extended both on, it'll be extended along Nevada City Highway.
So it'll go to, to the end of the property line?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then...
Okay.
And then also along Gates Place, along their frontage, up until their driveway.
Would that, oh, okay. Doesn't that already exist though?
Is there a sidewalk there?
On Gates Place?
I...
I think, isn't there some sidewalk on Gates Place?
There is an adjacent to the Lumberjacks property.
Yeah.
But not on that parcel.
So does it end...
So it'll go, it'll tie into the Lumberjacks one and extend that past the driveway, and then if they develop the rest of that lot later...
That'll be somebody else.
Or the next lot over, then the sidewalk will extend further up. There's no further sidewalk.
There's no further sidewalk up Gates Place.
Correct. So this sidewalk is being extended on both, on, on Nevada City Highway and on Gates?
Correct.
Nevada City Highway...
Nevada City Highway, the whole parcel, frontage.
Yeah.
And on Gates Place, just to five feet past the driveway.
Okay. That seems fair to me.
And there's a, there's another lot in between the top of this one and the, the little resource center up at the top of the hill, right? Is there another empty vacant lot?
Yes.
Right, so, which itself has no sidewalk?
But that is a good point, because there is a lot of missing sidewalk here. But if, if it's going to be extended in, to the property line, that, what more could you...
Yeah. And, uh, I'd love to see better bus circulation, but that stop is off, offsite, so... Okay. Then, do I hear a motion to, assuming I can find the top... Do I hear a motion to recommend that the development review project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15332 to adopt the findings of fact for approval of the development review permit as presented and to approve the development review permit for the 4300 square foot retail paint store as presented in accordance with the conditions of approval? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved, okay. We have a motion.
And I will second it.
We have a second from Gross and Koots. Could you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Brulette?
Aye.
Commissioner Koots?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Chairman Robbins?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, thank you.
And Chair, before we go into the next item, we did get one additional public comment for Berryman Ranch. Would you like to hear that?
Uh, yes, yeah, might as well do that now before we keep going. Okay.
Matt, that was a perfect...
Yes, on the Berryman Ranch situation, uh, somebody from the city needs to go down there and deal with the, um, storage pond runoff and the deterioration of the cover for the erosion control that's just turning into dust in little plastic pieces and infiltrating Berryman Creek. That would be a great thing for the city to track, is these projects. And actually, people in Berryman Ranch are extending outside of their property line and dealing things. You should check that out. You can see it from the back of Kmart or Target, looking down there. All righty, thanks a lot, Matthew Coulter.
And that is the end of the public comments.
Thank you. And, uh, we are allowed to reopen discussion in some sense when we receive a comment like that, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
And I, I will say, we, we also have the applicant now here with us.
Ah, okay. Uh, I don't know what doing some things outside their property means, but the, the point about erosion, the erosion control material breaking down...
Yeah, we do have a public works, um, you know, department that looks at those. I know they, you know, I know they've been real, um, active on, yeah, at least another site. So, I mean, I can, I can just give them a heads up to maybe check that out.
That would be great.
They, I think they do rounds, so...
Yeah. Okay. Any further secondary discussion on the Berryman Ranch item?
No.
Okay. Then we will reclose that topic and, uh, move to item four, the housing element annual progress report.
Thank you, Chair. Let me grab a staff report somewhere here. So, um, generally, we don't, it doesn't look like, um, prior planners have brought this item to you. However, this body asked us to bring housing, um, you know, a housing discussion, so we thought we'd pair it with the APR discussion. This, the APR is the annual progress report, it's a progress report for the housing element. We are currently in the third, fourth year of our, of our, um, of our current cycle. It's an eight-year cycle in total. We adopted the housing element in two, in August 2019. The 2019, 20, 2027 housing element included regional housing, a regional housing needs assessment, or RENA. Um, and I've outlined in the staff report, the, you know, the various levels of RENA. They, they allocate essentially, uh, income, like, the number of houses we're supposed to hit for targets, targeted income levels. And that total number of housing is 743. State law requires that we present the APR to the city council and, and then submit it to HCD and OPR, uh, housing, the, the Housing and Community Development Office and the Office of Planning and Research at, at the state level. To, this year, we, uh, we had 14 dwelling units proposed, six units entitled, five permits issued, and 32 units finalized with certificates of occupancy. And that was primarily the Brunswick Commons, is that what it's called, Brunswick Commons? And I'll also give some credit to our senior planner, uh, Lucy Rollins, who, who did the, uh, the APR, which I find really a tedious task, so I appreciate her very much. But overall, you know, we've, we have, you know, in this cycle, we have permitted 196 units. We have entitlements currently for 601 units, and that's if you count everything we have entitled under Loma Rica, Timberwood, Berryman Ranch, the Pines Apartments, and then Dorsey Marketplace. So we're actually in pretty good shape. You know, we're, we're doing what the city can do in terms of getting us to those numbers. We won't likely meet the low-income or very low-income targets. Those are really hard to meet, and I would say most jurisdictions in California are, are not meeting those. And the penalty for that is, um, once, if you're not meeting that, the state can come in and essentially make you do a, a multi-unit project ministerially, which is what, you know, if you're familiar with the Cassians Field over in Nevada City, that's, that's what they did there. So that was what's called an SB 35 project.
It's a nice project.
Yeah. Yeah, they did a nice job. Now, they also needed some local funds, so it helped, it helped the, you know, we could leverage some of the design aspects of it that way, but...
Thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah.
I always love seeing this kind of stuff.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, Amy, I'm sorry, I forget, what's the Pines?
The Pines, I didn't actually know what this was either, but they just, um, talked, they just reached out to me about it. But it's an apartments, apartment complex. I want to say there's 108 units entitled there. It's off of Bennett, yeah, okay.
Oh, I know what it is.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's in a well.
Yeah.
And then what's, I mean, Loma Rica's a big part of that number, right? But that's, I mean, is it...
Well, and I only counted the entitlements for the, uh, the, what we've actually seen tentative maps for. So not, not the side, up, the side on the other side of Brunswick, so... Yeah, I mean, and there, you know, my, I don't, I'm not sure what the stall out is, but I can, I can hazard some guesses that has to do with the, you know, the, the market, uh, housing market's not great for selling right now. That might turn soon, so we'll see. But, um, those kinds of things, uh, they might be just kind of trying to wait for the market. But they're, you know, they're working on their improvements, so I don't, I don't, I mean, those are expensive. I don't think they're just going to abandon the project.
Yeah. And this goes to 2027?
Yeah, right, yes. A few more years, yeah. We got, we have to have a good, good housing market, um, and then we might actually meet the overall target.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Ari? I'm just curious, the ordinance, possibility of ordinance to incentivize conversion, that, that item, is that something that would come to us, or does that go straight to the city council?
If it's an ordinance that has anything to do with essentially Chapter 17, and I'm not sure which one that is, do you know which, well, there's not, not a good...
The incentivized conversion of underutilized upper and basement level spaces to residential use within the town core zoning district.
Oh, sorry, that is, um, is that in, that's one of our programs, isn't it?
Yeah, it's cited under several items, yeah.
Yeah, that is the, so I had brought, we essentially had, um, a developer who is trying to develop some residential units in the, uh, in a second story on, you know, on Mill Street. And, um, they have a large building, but a teeny tiny lot. So even though in the town core, you have a, you have a density of 20 units per acre, which is fairly generous, um, because the lot is so tiny, it really only entitled them to one dwelling unit. And so we're trying to figure out, um, some way of, of incentivizing, you know, doing some sort of more like form-based code, and we haven't quite figured out how to do that yet. It's complicated because you still want to stay within the confines of the general plan and what that, um, that build-out ultimately intended. So, so we're, you know, Lucy and I are working on that. But the idea would be to allow additional housing in non-ground level, um, units in the town core area.
It sounds great. I'm just curious, like, would that, does that, what's the process we're getting it approved?
That would come to, so ultimately, that would be an ordinance change, so that would be, it would ultimately be approved by, or, you know, actioned by council. But that would get a recommendation from the planning commission.
Right. Okay. We do have to do a public comment on this, don't we? Okay. Is there any public comment on the, uh, our housing element regional needs update? Housing element, regional housing needs assessment?
Annual progress report.
Annual progress report, thank you. Is there any public comment in the room? Do we have any virtual public comment?
There are no extra public comments this time.
Okay. Then, uh, I will move to receive and file the report. Do I have a second? Moved by Robbins, seconded by Brulette. Could you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Brulette?
Aye.
Commissioner Koots?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Chairman Robbins?
Yes.
Four yeses.
And, uh, thank you again for bringing this to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which me, think takes us out of public discussion items. I cannot get my agenda back up to where it's supposed to be. That, yes, takes us out of public hearing, so we just have other business? Is there any review of city council items?
Oh, sorry, none from staff.
There is, yes. Um, at our next council meeting, the decision for Sierra Guest Homes was appealed and will be heard by the council.
Okay. Any future meetings, hearings, or study sessions?
We are trying to organize a workshop for a board science. I do not have the time yet, but it's really a workshop, that's going to come before you as a, as a body, but, uh, it's really a workshop with the merchants and the, um, and Freed and, and any general public who are concerned or have, want to discuss a board science. It'll be early March, more than likely.
Sounds good. Any commissioners would like to make any brief reports?
No, thank you.
Okay.